You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to the June 13th, 2023 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, today we celebrate and give thanks for every graduate. Thank you that each one is unique and brimming with potential. Thank you for leading them in their learning, for keeping them safe as they studied, and for watching over them during their school years with us. We pray that they may all feel proud of graduating and enjoy sharing their achievements with family and friends. May the graduation be a memory that burns bright within them as they embark on life's greatest adventure. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Board Member Miller. That was great. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda is written?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Our next order of business is special recognitions. First, our Forsyth Assistant Principal Association Scholarship recipients will be presented by the Association President Samantha Fitzgerald, who is our AP Louisville Elementary School.
Good evening Superintendent McManus, Board Chair Kaplan, and fellow board members. My name is Samantha Fitzgerald and I serve as the FAPA Forsyth Assistant Principals Association President, with me Yvonne James, who serves as our secretary. And tonight we have the honor of presenting the Forsyth Assistant Principals Association Scholarship recipients for the 2022-2023 school year. Each year, FAPA hosts a bowling tournament to raise funds to provide one senior in each high school a one-time scholarship. This year, in conjunction with our community donations, we were able to raise $5,146 for our students. The winners were selected based on the following criteria: a letter of recommendation, their academic performance, and an essay. This year's essays topic was "What Equity Means to Me." And speaking for the selection committee, we were left in awe and amazement at some of the wise words from these young men and women. I'd like to share two excerpts from our winners tonight. From one of our students, "To me, equity simply means to be fair. If rules are made and are implemented, they should be carried out as such. There is no reason for one individual or group to be allowed to bypass punishment or rules because they are looked upon as an elite individual. Schools should not be allowed to receive district materials that others have been denied. Racism plays a major role in equity. Slavery showed us just how inequitable the world could be. Rules were made for certain races and others were kept in change and shackles. Once freed, blacks were still or afforded the same rights as whites. Even in 2023, there are still things that we are fighting for. As a black male, I walk outside to hang out with my friends, and we must be extra careful. Our parents want to remind us to keep our hands visible, not become argumentative, be sure to look everyone in the face, and not do anything that would make us look suspicious. Unfortunately, this is what the world has come to. Even though my father works very hard in law enforcement, some individuals do not see a police sergeant's son. They see a black man who could be a threat. As I grow older, I'm waiting for the day when I and other individuals of color will be able to just be. Meaning, we can be in a world where all the rules that are set forth apply to us, and we no longer have to fear and make sure that we are checking all the boxes when we are going out. We are finally allowed to live in a world that fairness applies to all. This is what equity means to me." And the second one, "When one thinks of equity, one might make the mistake of confusing equity for equality. To me, equity means opportunity. It means the same opportunity to better oneself and to succeed to be given to anyone. As an adopted child from Russia, I know the firsthand importance of being given a chance, an opportunity to succeed. I started at the bottom of the barrel where I could be lucky to have even gotten a glimpse of the opportunity that I have now. For this reason, I am very grateful. However, I am also disappointed about the fact that the kids with whom I experienced the first months of my life were not given the same chance as me, that they are simply one of the many statistics in the orphan population, and that many of them never reached their 18th birthday. Even with all that I have, I can't help but feel a sense of bitterness that I can't walk alongside them in a world where we were all given the chance to run at the starting line, that their failure isn't their own, that the reason they faltered isn't because of that calc test, was too hard, or because they realized school wasn't their thing, but because they weren't ever given the chance to see what they could do. So if you ask me what I think equity is, I can't give you a straightforward answer. I'm not the most eloquent expert on the subject. I'm not even in the running of the top 100. But to me, equity means providing everyone with an equal chance to run the race of life." Those are just two of the amazing essays that we were able to read and just in awe of these students. And so I hope that you will help me recognize these students that are our FAPA scholarship winners this year. Luis Marin Vasquez from Early College. Maria Vara Des Vasquez from North Forsyth High School. Marquise White from Glenn High School. Lea Ahmed from Mount Tabor. Samir Flag from Reagan High School. Julia Knowles from Parkland. And Juliana Woody from Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy. We also have some very deserving individuals who had prior engagements from the following schools. We have Brianna Kyles from Atkins High School. Her grandmother is here tonight in her honor. We have Emma Walker from East Forsyth High School, and her parents are here this evening in her honor. William Patton from West Forsyth High School. And Larry Wilson from Reynolds High School. Congratulations, guys. Amazing.
Next, Andrew Craft, Director of Arts Education, will present our Music Performance Adjudication.
Good evening, Distinguished Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus. We are thrilled to recognize some amazing music teachers tonight on behalf of their students and their programs for their Superior Performance at Music Performance Adjudication. So what Music Performance Adjudication is, it's a performance opportunity that's in front of highly qualified adjudicators, a panel. It's the only state-sanctioned music evaluation that provides summative assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study for Music. And it's just a great learning opportunity for students to prepare a high-quality performance and then to receive evaluation and feedback so they can continue to grow. So we're really excited that we're able to do this tonight. I'm going to turn things over to our lead music teacher, Mr. Eugene Mayberry, who's going to continue this presentation. Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Music students across Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools put a lot of time and effort into MPA performances. It is important to note that the learning experience is always the primary objective, and we appreciate the effort of everyone, everyone who has gone above and beyond to perform in these particular venues. This is well illustrated in the following video featuring the Clemens Middle School Band and the director, Mr. Ron Forsh.
Oh, man, you did really well. How do you feel about the performance?
Excellent.
You feel excellent?
Yeah.
You can tell me I'm excellent at anything, man. I ain't gonna be mad at you. You understand? Excellent is still very, very something to be very, very proud of. You understand that, don't you?
Yeah.
Thank you for getting loaded up so quickly and handling yourself so well. But we didn't get an excellent. We got a superior. Oh, man, you did really well.
Okay. And so that says it all right there. The Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Superior MPA Awards for 2023. We have more students than this venue will allow, and so the way we handle it is we have the directors to receive the awards on behalf of their schools. Let's get those awards started with Atkins High School, mixed chorus, chamber orchestra, wind ensemble, symphonic band, and 13 student superiors at the solo and ensemble MPA. The directors are Ms. Valerie Mayhew, Greg Murphy, and Justin Sumner. Mr. Murphy is receiving today. The Clemens Middle School Contest Band, which you just saw in the video, who won a superior rating, and 17 student superiors at the solo and ensemble MPA. And of course, Director Mr. Ron Forsh. Mr. Sigler could not be here today, but it's important to let you know that the 15 student superiors from Diggs Latham, our Diggs Latham Elementary School. So did a fantastic job. We're proud of them. Another emergency that someone was not able to be here is Dr. Carol Earnhardt, solo superior from Robert B. Glenn High School. Next up is Haynes Magnet School, 7th Grade Advanced Choir, 7th Grade Intermediate Orchestra, 8th Grade Advanced Orchestra, 8th Grade Advanced Band, the Jazzin' Dragons, and 63 student superiors at solo and ensemble MPA. Directors are Alann and Brat for Chorus, Marjorie Sharp for Orchestra, Noah Brown, and Mary Kate Choak for Band. Next up, Lewisville Middle School 8th Grade Chorus. Ms. Dobbins could not be here, but we wanted to make sure they were recognized on the program as well. Just to note, one of her former students had an issue, and the family of Ms. Dobbins is helping them out with something today. So teachers never stop working. Moving on, Meadowlark Middle School, 16 student superior ratings. Director is Mr. Andrew Litten. Next, another scheduling issue. Mount Tabor High School Wind Ensemble earned a superior rating, as well as three student superiors at the solo and ensemble MPA. Director is Ms. Rebecca Sahuntas. I pressed the wrong button. How embarrassing. Next up, North Forsyth High School Symphonic Band Superior Award to Mr. Christian Orr. Next up, Paisley Magnet School, four student superior ratings at solo and ensemble MPA. I don't believe the director, Noah Brown, could be here today, but we congratulate them as well. The RJ Reynolds Acappella Choir, which is, in my opinion, the toughest to do, Director Mr. Josh Settlemeyer. Ronald Reagan Combined Choir, Chamber Orchestra Symphony Orchestra Concert Band, Symphonic Band, Wind Ensemble, Jazz Combo, Jazz Ensemble 1, Jazz Ensemble 2, and 76 student superiors. Directors are Ben Young Dobbins, Kenneth Tyser, and Robert Johnson. Told you I could say it in one breath. Planning her wedding, Ms. Angel Reed could not be here tonight, but she is congratulated for Southeast Middle School, 7th, 8th Grade, Mixed Chorus. Thomas Jefferson Middle School, 13 student superior ratings. I don't believe Mr. Joyner could make it easier, but we congratulate them as well. Walker Town Middle School and High School, a combined group. Lord bless this man. He teaches all of them. The High School Symphonic Band and a combined middle school, high school concert band, Mr. Quincy Lundey. And ladies and gentlemen, West Forsyth High School Wind Ensemble and Concert Band, Mr. Tom Sheumaker.
Before we do public comments, I just wanted to mention that Vice Chair Alex Bohannon and Board Member Sabrina Kuhn could not join us here, but they are joining us virtually. So welcome to both. I'm glad you're here. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items, only if you have signed up to speak. We ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. Please be kind, respectful, and direct your comments to me as chair. Know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. First, Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, Ms. McManus.
Good evening.
I attended the board workshop back in March where the code of conduct was discussed. One of the backbones of this code of conduct was the idea of restorative practice. At that time, 393 staff members in the district had attended restorative practice training. Since then, there have been three sessions. How many more are trained, I don't know. But it's kind of hard to build a code of conduct and the whole idea that we're actually going to make a difference when we don't have staff trained to carry that out. At that meeting, there were, it was pointed out that there had been 7,165 incidents of physical aggression, excuse me, at the most recent. 1,542 of those resulted in ISS. 2,432 of those got OSS, and 3,191 got some lesser degree of consequences. Was that restorative justice? Was that restorative practices? We don't know. 11,669 students so far this year, as of the last meeting, had received 38,134 D1s documenting 68,373 incidents. That averages 5.85 incidents per student. Obviously, those students were not concerned that there would be consequences for their behavior. This school year, five students of Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools have been killed by gun violence in our neighborhoods. Didn't happen at school, but what they learn in the community, they bring to school, and what they learn in school, they take to the community. We can claim disruptive behavior is not tolerated. If it happens to the level of D1s 68,373 times, if students average 85 D1s each, it is being tolerated. You would think that if we're doing this right, it would get better over the course of the year. In the three months since the March meeting, there had been an increase of 89.6% incidence. I'll save my comments for the panorama.
Thank you. Valerie Brockenbauer.
Board Chair Kaplan, Board Members and Superintendent McManus, I am here to thank the board for bringing up the resolution against school vouchers. The new school voucher bill will provide vouchers for every family in the state regardless of income. It is a cash giveaway to the wealthy. By 2032, funding for the program will be $500 million annually. It will send our tax dollars directly to private schools, many of them religious schools, and without appropriate oversight. This bill will contribute to an education system where you have underfunded public schools, serving mostly poor middle-class families, and private schools that will benefit the upper class. I hope each one of you will support this resolution. There's also a rally on June 21st, a rally organized by Every Child NC against this terrible bill. I hope a lot of people from Forsyth County will attend. I plan on being there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Well, as that gets pulled up, as you can imagine, my first slide is going to be about graduation, since we just spent all weekend in our graduation ceremonies. Thank you to our board for being there to do a welcome in each of the ceremonies. They were absolutely incredible. And so we had nearly 4,000 graduates with over 123 million in college scholarships awarded. And go ahead, Kevin, you can just see some of the pictures. It was just a great weekend, full of smiles and celebration. So summer, we will not rest very long this summer. Actually, I'm not sure we'll rest at all, but we start summer program with 4,980 kids that will start. You can see some of our calendar timeline there. We have 650 staff that have been hired to support our students. Next week is our PD that kicks off those that will be providing the services during summer. They'll be in a PD. We still, as you know, we have partnered with our community providers. And then also senior squeeze. We are still not done graduating our seniors because we'll still have more that will take the senior squeeze or take part in senior squeeze, and we'll graduate in the summer ceremony. So don't put your capping gown away yet if you're on the board. We still have one more to go. And summer professional learning. I'm really excited this summer because we have done, we have several things that are coming up for our employees just to continue learning in the summer for those that are not teaching summer school, or those that are, that when they're done, want to take part in professional learning. Our Talent Development Department produced a menu of professional learning courses for the summer, for the whole summer, that people can take just to enhance their skills if they choose to. These are optional courses offered throughout the summer. And then we are having in August a Connected Learning Conference. That is an opportunity that teachers that attend that will receive a stipend. So that's for instructional staff, not just teachers, but all instructional and instructional support staff. And then on August 25th, by the way, I mentioned this earlier, we are going to have a back-to-school bash for all of our employees, all 7,000 in one location. And so more, more information to come about that event, just to kick off the 23-24 school year, which will be, by the way, our 60th first start as we celebrate the 60th, our 60th year next year as a school district. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First, Dr. Leslie Alexander, Chief Human Resource Officer, will give us a staffing update.
Board Chair Kaplan, Board Member Superintendent McManus, I'm going to give you a brief, but pretty good staffing update. Okay, on this slide, we are really looking at our classroom vacancies. So what we have is, the first column is where we are currently and compared to where we were last year. So a couple of things that are noteworthy, we currently have about 275 vacancies. If we did not add Title I positions, those are positions that schools add with their Title I dollars, we would be at 242. We are still better than we were last year, so we're heading in a good direction. You'll see that our non-classroom vacancies are down, and our classified vacancies are significantly down. So if you think about our TAs in our classrooms, we're seeing far fewer retirements or resignations in that group, so we think that's positive. Overall, our total vacancies are 353 compared to 517 last year. So we feel pretty good about that. We've got some areas of success in operations and also some areas that we're still working on. You will see that our custodians, we did not keep track of custodian data until this year, so that's why there's no data comparisons for last year. Our bus drivers are up a bit. We've had about 10 retirements lately and 10 more than we had last year. We do have about 10 applications that are currently in process, and I'll talk about some upcoming career fairs that we have planned for that group. We feel really good about our kitchen assistants. We were at 119 last year, and you can see that we're at 64 right now. So total vacancies, we're still up a bit, mainly in that bus driver category, so we will be working on that as we move forward. Just a little overview of our recruitment events. We've increased our events, total events, by about 15%. We've really specifically targeted our HBCUs and our HSI, which are Hispanic-supporting institutions. We also started tracking when we have the number of people that come to an event, a recruitment event. Previously, we were just tracking the number that attended and signed in. When we did that, though, we found that only about 10% of the people that came to our recruitment events actually submitted applications. So I asked our team to start tracking the applications that were submitted, put a little more increased effort into making sure that those people that attend actually get an application submitted. So we did go from beneath 10% to 40%. So we are moving in a better direction, and that lets So, we are moving in a better direction, and that lets us, our team, know that, that if that increases and we're still not getting the hires, then we work with hiring managers more specifically to ensure that interviews are scheduled. Just this, the, what's beneath is just an overview of some of our latest recruitment events. We had over three hundred at our spring career fair. We did start offering early contracts this year. That was in an effort to get candidates before other districts get to them. Previously, we were wait, we were waiting until all positions were allotted before we were able to hire. But we, we started doing vacancy projections over like a three-year period to say, okay, if Gibson normally has eight vacancies, then let's go ahead and let them offer four early contracts. We felt like that would be safe. Finance supported that. And so, we were able, able to offer some early contracts. Our operation in career fair, one of the things that we started doing differently there is actually having the hiring managers at the recruitment event, so we could get the applications submitted and some preliminary offers made. So, appreciate the operations team for making sure that they showed up to those events. A couple, before I talk about international teachers, I do want to let you know, and this is not on the slide because it hasn't happened yet, but on June twenty-first, we do have a virtual career fair for all positions, and we have over five hundred people that have signed up for that event. We also have an alternative pathways to teaching webinar on Ju-, or July eleventh, and we have eighty-one people register for that. And then, July eighteenth, we have one specifically for operations. So, hopefully, we'll get some of those operation vacancies filled. Another thing that we've done in trying to make sure that, that we are fully staffed is worked with our international teachers. We work with a company called EPI. So, we currently have twenty-four teachers that we have secured through this group. These are international teachers, and we conducted over fifty interviews and have added an additional seventeen teachers for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We also tried to offer more HB1 visas. That's not something that we did a lot before, but this year, we did eleven. We're renewing nine that were already previously with us, and then we're sponsoring five additional green card teachers. We're also very excited to hopefully promote recruitment and retention through our T-Slip grant. If you remember, that's a fourteen-million-dollar grant that we received from the Department of Education. And so, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, in, in bonuses, instructional and individual bonuses, we paid out over a million dollars. So, we're happy to be able to give that money back to our teachers and are proud of them for their performance. And we will use that grant as we continue to tier our supports to schools, as we try to be intentional about how we staff our schools with, that have the most needs. Any questions?
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
What are we doing to recruit our recent graduates and also those from Forsyth Tech?
So, we have, excuse me, we are working, we've expanded our teacher cadet program. And so, in working with that, we're, we went from having three schools that had teacher cadet to actually reaching out, and by the end of next year, we'll have a teacher cadet program in all of our high schools. So, we're really trying to build that pipeline to build their interest while they, while we still have them.
Up for more like the classified. Like, I'm thinking about like bus drivers or cafeteria workers. Is there a way, you know, if, if a kid's taking a couple of classes at Forsyth Tech, maybe they could be a bus driver for us so that they can help pay for their school or pay for their incidentals?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Forsyth, Forsyth Tech is one of the places where we do hold our career fairs, and so there has been an intentional effort there. They're also doing a lot of signage placement around the community, just to make sure that that increased rate, because the salaries did go up, which is one of the reasons we think we're seeing fewer resignations in our classified group. So, we do think the salary is making a difference.
Any other questions? Well, Dr. Alexander, I just want to say thank you so much for all the hats that you have worn in this district and all you have done for us as a district.
Thank you.
For the years that you've been here.
Thank you.
I'm very excited about your being a superintendent in Watauga County, but we're going to miss you. This is your last meeting.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you too. I was going to jump in and say that, so thank you, Chair Kaplan. So, thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, and Paula Wilkins, Chief Academic Officer, will present the recommended twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four calendar modification to support professional development.
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. So, this is a modification to the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar that you all have approved. In conversations with our superintendent and with Paula Wilkins, we really wanted to make sure that teachers had an opportunity to have some professional development opportunities so that they can do deeper learning throughout the year. And so, as we were looking at days to add to this calendar to support that professional development effort, we really wanted to tie them to days that teachers already had a reserved day. And so, we have a day at the end of each quarter, as you can see on this calendar. The first one is in October. And so, we tagged, oops, we tagged a day on right there at the end of the quarter. So, teachers would still have a day in their school, in their classroom, doing grades, closing out that quarter, and then another day for district-level PD for curriculum support to provide deeper learning going into the next quarter. And so, that first one that you see is at the end of October, on the thirty-first. The next date proposed is at the end of the second quarter, which is December twenty-fifth. And then, the third date proposed is Monday, March fourth, or excuse me, Monday, March fifth, adding March fourth, but making March fourth the reserved for teacher day and making Tuesday, March fifth, the professional development day. You may recall that we selected that as a teacher workday because that is a primary election day, and there's about thirty schools that are used as election sites, and teachers and students really wanted to try to be away from their facilities on that day if they could. So, this does reduce the number of student days in the calendar. State calendar policy regulation does require a minimum of one thousand twenty-five hours. We do still meet that requirement with this calendar. And so, I will open up the floor for questions from board members.
Any questions?
Not a question, but a wonderful comment. Yay, October thirty-first as a non-school day. Yay.
The, the problem is the next day is. So, do your, do your trick-or-treating early, everyone.
Any other questions? Okay. Lastly, Jonathan Wilson, our Chief Security and Emergency Management Officer, will discuss the SRO contracts.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, board. It's my pleasure tonight to talk to you about the SRO contracts. Before I start, I want to draw attention to Captain Ammons with the Sheriff's Office and the newly promoted Captain Meritz from the Council of Police Department. Both of these folks served as the lieutenants for their SRO programs before being promoted to captain. So, they probably get tired of talking to me each and every day, but they're, they're my partners. So, with that said, we'll jump right in. Just, just the overall view of what the contracts look like for the coming twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Forsyth County Sheriff's Office is for four million, four forty-one, two twenty, and that is for thirty-nine total positions. Those are broken down into thirty-one SROs, three sergeants, one lieutenant, and one captain. Those three, those corporals, sergeants, lieutenant, captain serve as the command staff to oversee those SROs. The Sheriff's Office covers twelve of our traditional middle schools and thirteen of our high schools. There are two campuses that share an SRO, I mean, sorry, two, Paisley, Paisley Lawrence has one SRO because there's two schools within that building, and then Forsyth Career Center and Kennedy High School share an SRO because they're in close proximity on the same campus. Those are twenty-five assigned SROs and six roving officers move around. And the extra duty rates for the coming year for off-duty events is fifty-five for SROs and sixty for supervisors. The Council of Police Department contract is for six hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-four, and that is for six total positions, five SROs and one sergeant. Those cover three middle schools in the city limits of Kernersville and one high school. It includes four assigned officers and one roving officer. And just to be noted, Colonel, Town of Kernersville provides one additional roving officer at their expense to help out, and their extra duty rates remain at thirty-five dollars per hour regardless of whether it's a supervisor or an officer. The SRO duties and responsibilities, obviously, I can't cover. You guys have seen the full contract, but just to highlight a few things, there's one SRO per school or campus with the ability to shift resources with those roving positions. And those roving positions have been very important because there's some days when one school may need additional officers, and on the other day, we, on those days that they're not additional, there, there's one officer that's always there. The SRO model continues to be, we switched this in twenty-twenty-one, to, to use the tribe model, and basically, it consists of law enforcement, security, which is the most important, to keep our staff and students safe, law-related student counseling, and law-related educations. And just to point out that their SROs do not get involved in school discipline unless that discipline rises to an action that is criminal-related. The contract language continues to include, number one, the most important, to protect the lives and property of the folks on our campuses and our campuses. They obviously would respond first in the, in the event that something happened on our campuses. They educate and counsel students as needed. There's, there's opportunities for them to provide training and classes to, to students when called upon by administrators. They participate in individual and group discussions on occasion with restorative circles or restorative practices. And again, they're not to be involved in any enforcement of disciplinary infractions unless it rises to a violation of the law. Questions about SRO training? Just so you know, North Carolina requires that any officer that serves as an SRO would complete the basic training course for school resource officers, and that is a curriculum that is developed and, and maintained by the Justice Academy of North Carolina. That's the curriculum. And that, that training must be completed within one year of assignment as an SRO. But I can tell you that they make every effort to have those officers fully trained before they step foot on our campuses and, and do a great job at doing that. There are opportunities or situations where an SRO leaves for a particular reason, and they have to put someone in there, but they're trained at the next available opportunity. But again, that's, that's rare that that happens. And they also comply with annual SRO refresher training. I think they're probably going to step off and start doing that as recently as probably this week or next. And then, over the coming years, I've talked to both these folks, both these officers here, we're going to offer opportunities for school resource, resource officers to be trained through the coming years, and trying to do this on an ongoing basis. And those could include safety and security updates. We do a lot of change to our plans, a lot of changes to our plans, a lot of new technologies that we put within our buildings, and so that their officers know how to use those technologies and are up to speed. Obviously, training on the code of character, conduct, and support, social, emotional learning, and exceptional children, de-escalation, behavioral supports, crisis response, and restorative interventions. And that's, that is the beginning list, so we, we can probably find some other things. And I, we, in just talking, I think that they can provide some resources and training to our principals on what they do, because we obviously see the world in a lot of different viewpoints from, from, from our duties. We have an SRO meeting structure. We started this prior to, prior to the twenty-two school year, where we had an opportunity to come together as a joint principals and SROs meeting. We're going to resume that this year for district administration, principals, and SROs. We're going to do that yearly before school starts. We have a monthly meeting with, we're going to ask for a monthly meeting for safety and security, athletics, and the SRO command staff. That is my team, along with athletics, John Sullivan, because they do so much work with our athletic programs and the command staff. And that's an opportunity for us to meet monthly, to discuss problems that we're having, issues that we're having, and just to problem-solve and to do things better. The, the new one this year would be a weekly meeting with a principal and the SRO. And then, the SRO program evaluation, we do, or do that yearly. We've just completed that survey. We'll be able to share that data with you very soon, once we get it compiled in, in a readable format. Principals and SROs, even though they're, we've, we're going to ask them to week, to meet formally, weekly, principal SROs should be talking daily, and they do that. And, and the survey shows that they do. And I can tell you that those two folk, two, two guys right here and myself, we talk throughout the day for incident management, things that pop up within the schools, and then just planning for, for future things. But we talk daily and sometimes nightly to, probably to their displeasure. So, the recommendation is to approve the SRO contracts to be funded from the twenty-three, twenty-four safety and security budget. This will support strategic goal number five, to foster an inclusive environment within our schools. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Just one question for me. When you look at the extra duty rates, why is there a difference between the extra duty rates in the city versus Kernersville? Because a lot of our smaller schools in the cities, we have trouble trying to pay that fifty-five dollars an hour for SROs.
So, I would say that, and Captain Ammons can correct me, but those rates are set by the city and the county. So, if the city of Winston-Salem has the same rates that the county does, Kernersville, I think Captain Meritz here is just a nice guy, and so he wants to do it a little cheaper. I don't, I don't really know, but I think it's, it's basically set by their departments because they're called upon, not just for us, but for other things. I will say that the requirement for the minimal amount of hours is lower for the schools than typically. So, if, if, if I was a, a business and I hired an off-duty officer, it would probably be a four-hour minimum, and their charge is a three-hour minimum because they know that schools do struggle to pay those, pay those rates.
Can we look at, possibly looking at a sliding scale for some of our smaller schools on athletics who do not have a large ticket gate? That we're looking at basketball or football at a one-A school, their ticket receipts are much smaller than others, and I'm just wondering, can we have some consideration for smaller schools at that rate?
I think that's probably a conversation that I, I would probably need to have with the budget officers for those departments, probably not Captain Ammons. But I would say that we have supported on, on our own schools that struggle, us picking up the bill. And so, we actually had asked for some of that money in our budget. I'm not sure if, where we are necessarily with that, but we realized that some schools need some support and that we would pick up that if, if the school struggles.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
I just wanted to make a comment. I just want to thank the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and the Town of Kernersville Police Department for this partnership. I think it's incredibly important that we have your presence in our schools so that students and staff feel safe. I've, I've heard that message over and over in schools that I've been in. And having shadowed an officer at Glenn High School about a month ago, y'all definitely get your steps in. So, that, that was not an issue that day, but just appreciate all you do because it makes a big difference in the schools. And, and just seeing the interaction with the officers and the students, you know, fist bumping them kids as they go down the hall, or teachers being able to come out of a room and saying, you know, can I get your support with this? It, it makes a big difference, so thank you.
If I could, with, with the risk of just saying, starting a talk without really having a slide to show you, I would say that just the survey that I've looked at, one of the questions was, does the SRO's presence contribute to a better learning environment? This was said to all of our middle school and high school principals. Ninety-two percent of our principals said that it did contribute to a, a better learning environment. Another one here, the presence of the SRO has deterred violence within your school. Eighty-eight percent said it was either strongly, that they either strongly agreed or that they agreed with that. So, that's a high number. And then, this is another one. The presence of the SRO has reduced fear of crime among students, and ninety-one percent of our principals stated that they either strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. So, we, we do have some strong data to show that the SRO presence within our schools is very important.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thanks so much. We will move on to our action items. First, consider approval of the recommended twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four calendar modification to support professional development. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the revised Forsyth County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer Contract for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Some move. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the revised Kernersville Police Department School Resource Officer Contract for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Wood, no, Board Member Watts. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the proposed resolution regarding voucher legislation. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, six in favor? Opposed? Okay, three opposed. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the 2022-2023 School Calendar Reconciliation for DPI Record Due to Inclement Weather Day for September 2022. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion?
This was, this was reconciling last year's calendar.
Yes, 2022. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Appalachian State University Academy of Middle Fork Addendum. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the child nutrition meal pricing. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the high school auxiliary gym floor replacements. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Wood. Any, any, no, excuse me.
Board Member Barr.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the downtown school ADA ramp installation. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the West Roof Contractor for Emergency Repair. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the FMX Contract for Facility Work Order and HVAC Schedule System. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the disposition of surplus property. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Wood. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the 2023-2024 CTE Local Plan. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Contract with Public Impact. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the SEL Curriculum Contracts with Second Step and Project Wayfinder. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
I'd like to just make a statement that I would love to see us be a little more proactive next, next time these contracts come up. I know that Second Step has been in the district for some time and that these are Title IV funds that come from a pot that we cannot shift money from. I want to just make that clear for the public. But that possibly, when we look at Wayfinder, maybe we could look at other options, whether it's more cost-effective or even free or potentially even writing our own curriculum. I'd just love to see us be a little more proactive moving forward when we look at this as a fiscal responsibility next year.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley and a second by Board Member Watts. And we've had our discussion, so all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of engaging schools contract renewal. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Panorama Universal Screening Contract Renewal. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
This is just another point to make for the public, to remind everyone that we are required to have a service like Panorama and that this is one of the most used across the country. I just wanted to make sure that we remind folks that this is something that we have to have.
Thank you, Board Member Coon. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Curriculum Associate, which is the iReady contract renewal. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
Question.
Question, okay.
Again, I just want to reiterate my concern with iReady that we would try to find a way to move less of iReady and more teacher engagement. A lot of our students and staff are feeling like this is something that's requirement and it's not actively moving the needle. So as we look forward to other opportunities for remediation and teaching, let's consider moving away from the computer.
Yeah, now, I was, I was pleasantly surprised by the data that we received that we had asked for at the workshop about how much time students are spending on their Chromebook, specifically in iReady. And I, I was pleasantly surprised that it was less than what my perception had been.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
So I had a question.
Yes.
Have, so based on the information we were sent, we were sent earlier, the recommended amount of time, I believe, was 40 minutes, if I'm not mistaken. But most of our schools are not spending that amount of time, which in terms of not having kids on the Chromebooks too long, I think is a good thing. But how do we, if, if we're not utilizing the, if we're not utilizing iReady for the recommended amount of time, what, I guess, I'm curious about, like, what's the impact of that on the success of its usage?
Yeah, it, it, so I can respond to that. So it, it, and I think in our district, so that the national recommendation, I mean, because many districts use it, is the 40 minutes a week. Paula had mentioned last week, we recommend 30 in ELA and math, or just in ELA? 30 in ELA, 30 in math, which is lower than, I mean, it's 40 minutes. So, so basically, what their research shows is that if you're not using it for the recommended amount of time, and they must have worked with us to say 30 was, was okay, between 30 and 40, that the impact is, is lessened at the, the positive impact in the use of the program. What we're going to be doing as we move forward with it, you know, one of the things that Paula mentioned in the workshop, the, the agenda reviews, is that we also use it as an assessment. It's our screener, our universal screener at the beginning of the year, and then we use it two times of the year. If, as we move forward, there are schools, and after this year, there are schools that are not using it with fidelity and are not finding value, we're not going to continue it. I mean, it's just, that's very simple, moving forward. We just did not want to pull it this year because there are about 24, I think it was about 24, that love it, use it, use it with fidelity, and feel like it's having an impact. And some of those schools are, and some of our schools that had been low-performing that have gotten off state lists, that love it, use it. So it is about use. So we have to make the decision after this year, are we just going to let schools that want to continue using it, use Title I funds or use something to, and just keep doing it in their schools because it's working, but not continue to use this, to make this expense to do it system-wide? So that is definitely, we're going to do a deeper dive during this next school year to just make that decision. And our, our coming back to next year will look very different.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. All in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Vice Chair Verhanen, I'm sorry, your hand, did you?
That was a yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So look at it, all the screens. Okay, so we have, we have eight in favor, one abstaining. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the Discovery Education Textbook and Resource Contract Renewal. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so all in, okay, so opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? Board Member Coon, how, how did you vote?
Abstain.
You're abstaining, okay. So we have seven in favor, two abstaining. Motion passes. Next, consider approval of adopted digital science textbook for biology. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So Board Member Crowley made the motion, second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Elevation Contract. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Our next order of business is the Consent Agenda Items. Consider approval of the Technology Annual Hardware/Software Renewals. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion?
And this is like our Microsoft contracts and things like that?
DocuSign, all the things that we need in order to, yeah, to function and operate. Yes, everything. So there's a, there's a list of, of the contracts and the consent agenda and the, the amounts, just for transparency, just so everybody can see it. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, discussion, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. So our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, June 27th, will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. And before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. And thank you to Board Member Coon and Vice Chair Verhanen for joining us virtually. And this will conclude our broadcast.